Call this meeting to order. Our chairman is gone today, so I'm filling in for him. We'll first stand with the Pledge of Allegiance and I will have Pastor Eric Wildin from Our Lady of Guadalupe Church offer the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we didn't have a pastor? Well, let's pray. Father, we thank you, Lord, this morning for allowing us to be here. Father, we pray that you would just meet with us here in this meeting room. Lord, guide us, direct us in the things that we discuss and we do. Or we pray that we would have patience one with another and that we would do the things that would honor you, honor the county. And Lord, we just ask you that you would would guide in all the things that are going on. Lord, we remember Israel at this moment. Lord, we pray that you'd be with them in this time of trouble for them. Lord, we know that you said a nation that prays for and blesses your nation will be a blessed nation. We really need that right now, so we pray, Lord, for these things. We just ask you that you would have your hand upon every one of us we go about this day. Protect us and guide us now, that it would bring honor and glory to you. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. Well, welcome. Appreciate you being here this morning. I think we will, I don't know that I have any announcements necessarily. Maybe one, I don't know that it's on the agenda for, and maybe we'll say this later, for the Public Works hearing for the solar on Thursday afternoon, is that right? At four o'clock? November 9th? Okay. Well, I'll throw that anyway out for November 9th. For those that are listening, be sure and be there if you have questions or concerns they want to hear from you. It's at?
600 Scott Boulevard.
Oh. Six, yeah, 600 Scott Boulevard in South Hutch. So anyway, if you're planning on being there. At this moment, I don't really have any other comments. If we don't have, we'll open it for public comments. I know we had one here, if you'd like to do that, state your name and...
Good morning. Casey Swartz, 207 Buckskin Road. Respectfully, I'm here to address your meeting on October 3rd dealing with the health consultant position. This meeting was billed as an interview for the two finalists for the position. As job interviews go, it was like nothing I've ever seen. It veered off into the weeds more often than not, and it looked to me more like a biased relitigation of the pandemic than an interview. My understanding is the health consultant job focuses on public health emergencies, not on dietary wellness, not to produce newsletter articles pertaining to health, and definitely not for abortion counseling. Only one candidate has board certification, surgery experience, infectious disease experience, and is truly qualified. Misinformation and propaganda permeates our society today. I believe there was much COVID disinformation presented at the meeting, so much so that I produced a packet of my thoughts and concerns on what was said, which I'd like to give to the commissioners after I'm done. Now, I'm not naive enough to think that I'm going to change any minds, but it will help me sleep at night. So, you have an outstanding health department, which offers a wide range of services and is an essential, convenient, and affordable option for the community. I do not think that hollowing out the health department is a wise move. Watching Dr. Polly, I realized how reasoned and professional he really was. He even admitted that he was only human and inevitably has made mistakes. His knowledge of the actual facts was spot on. In my opinion, you're quite lucky to have him as a consultant. It was also suggested to halt COVID vaccinations at your health department. I highly encourage you not to do this. Many people, especially the uninsured, depend upon your health department. Getting a COVID vaccine at the health department is a matter of choice for many. Why would you want to take away their freedom to choose? As to efficacy, even when in the emergency use phases, the vaccines had already passed clinical trials with extensive evidence of efficacy and safety, and the label "experimental" was and is simply a slander. mRNA COVID vaccines are true vaccines, using groundbreaking technology 30 years in the making. They do not change your DNA. The ingredients are well-known and available to those who look. There's a mountain of evidence showing their effectiveness. They've saved millions of lives, and while you may still get COVID after being vaccinated, you most likely won't die or have long COVID. The side effects, while very real, are mostly minor compared to the disease for most people. Two of the scientists credited with the mRNA technology recently won the Nobel Prize in Medicine. The attack on COVID vaccines comes with a price for all vaccines, as some of the public will relieve the misinformation and refrain from getting any vaccines. Misinformation has a downside. People will die from being unvaccinated. In the meeting, it was stated that the commission would promptly relieve an employee or consultant if they brought you any mandate, mask mandate, or closure recommendation. I feel this is an extremely dangerous position to take. The mere mention of this course of thinking can stifle honest dialogue that could be vitally needed. What if we had an infectious disease with a 10% or 20% death rate? Every option should be on the table for the commissioners to consider, and staff should be encouraged to be open and honest. Commissioners have the final say, not your staff or consultants. This next one's a little difficult, but I'm going to do it. And finally, I believe we are going through this exercise because of the ego of one man, Mark Stephan, and his super-spreading of alternative facts. Mr. Stephan has held a grudge with Dr. Polly since the beginning of the pandemic, when Dr. Polly wouldn't fold to his demands. In the interview meeting, the monetary relationship between doctors and drug companies was brought up. In 2022, the Stephans invested thousands in campaign contributions to current members of the commission, and it is evident that Mark expects a return on his investment. The only question is, will you, as a commission, give him that return? Thank you for listening.
Appreciate it.
And is it okay to hand that out?
Yeah. You could leave them up here, we'll distribute them, or you can hand them out, they'd be fine. You want me to leave one for Daniel here? Oh, he does? Okay. All right, moving to item number five. Additions or revisions to the agenda? No? Okay. Well, seeing there is none, we'll move to item six, consent agenda. Any discussion on any of these items or questions? Nothing? Okay. Well, seeing there's none, we'll have a roll call to approve those. Do we, do we need to? Oh, we need to, we need to... Oh, set the date? Yeah.
That's got to come first.
Yeah, I forgot about that one at the bottom.
And I believe your alternate date on the recommendations was incorrect, but again, no problem.
For an alternate? Or for? For actual date? Okay.
Will that interfere with? We don't have a meeting that week, do we? The third, yeah, the third one, say. All right. I'll motion to approve the consent agenda as presented by staff with the recommended canvas date of Wednesday, November 15th, 2023, at 9:00 a.m. at the Reno County Annex Conference Room.
Second, Don Bogner seconds. Any further questions? Well, seeing none, I guess we'll have a roll call.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes.
Excuse me, Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Mr. Bogner?
Yes.
Mr. Weitzel?
Yes.
Motion passed four to one. I'm kidding, he's not here, he can't move. Passed four to zero. He's a neutral today, I guess. Item seven, moving on, we'll open the public hearing for the wastewater improvement project for Seer District 201 Yoder and 202 Hutchinson Air Industrial Base. Improvements will be funded under a low-interest state revolving loan fund program through Kansas Department of Health and Environment. We'll open it for discussion now.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rosemary Saunders from Ranson Financial. Been working with the county and the project engineer on this project to apply for funding for the aforementioned project. It is to benefit both the Yoder and the Habit area with the consolidation of the treatment facilities due to the inability of the Yoder facility to meet parameters according to information that has been set forth. The proposed project is a total of $6,123,100. We are applying to Kansas Department of Health and Environment for a low-interest loan. This public hearing is a requirement of that loan application. After the hearing, the commissioners will consider a resolution to move forward on the completion of the application. It is due in Topeka on October 16th. And then we are also pursuing additional funding to make the project possibly more feasible through USDA rural development, but we will bring that information to the commissioners and that at a later date. I can answer some questions in regard to the project, but as far as design goes, I will not answer any because I am not an engineer.
Is there any questions? This has a $1 million forgiveness built into it as well? I don't know if you mentioned that or not?
That is correct.
Yeah, to help alleviate some of that, yeah.
That is correct.
Yeah, okay.
And this would be the first step, and once this step takes place, there's a good chance for for some other funding, grants and stuff, but this has got to be in place before we can apply them.
That is correct, sir.
Just wanted to make that clear to the public.
Yeah, just see if there's any other Yeah. public comments during the public hearing?
Yeah.
Before you close it?
Yeah. Does anybody else here that would like to make comment about this or discuss it?
This project's been working on for quite a while. Don's been working on it a long time. Public Works has been, and the engineers have been.
Yep. It's time to move forward if we can get it going, help them out there and get rolling. So, well, seeing there's no other comments then, I guess we can close the meeting.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. So we need a motion for a resolution to pass this?
Yeah, there's some recommendation requests. I don't know, you probably can do that all in one motion or read each one separate. On the second one, or on the third one, it says authorize vice chair or county administrator to sign, so just make sure you clarify which one that is.
Okay. Don't need to read all these in for people? I can. Authorize the county administrator to sign the Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund application. Number two is approve resolution authorizing the filing of application for the Kansas Department of Health and Environment for a loan under the Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Act Fund. Number three, under this recommendation, is authorize the vice chair or county administrator to sign the document for application of assurance, public participation for the Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Loan Fund projects. And number four is authorize the vice chair to sign the certificate certification regarding lobbying document. Any further questions, maybe about that or?
Is that considered a motion? We need a motion.
We need a motion. You motioning?
I would, I would move to approve the motion as stated by our, by Commissioner Parks and what he just said. Does that make sense? I need to read that again.
It's about full.
Can we have a second?
I'll second that.
Don Bogner seconds? Any further discussion? Well, seeing none, we'll see.
I would say something.
You want to say something? Go ahead, Don.
Yeah, this, this is an application. It's not an actual loan yet.
Yeah.
We haven't, so it's part of the process.
Sorry, I don't see, I don't have the numbers in front of me today that light up, so I can't see it.
I can bump you.
Yeah, that's fine.
As presented by staff, you know, I think the staff presented this, and we've been through this, and it's time to get on with it and get in a position to be in compliance with the Clean Water Act.
Anything else? Not? Do a roll call.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to agenda, agenda item eight A, planning case 23, 2023-09. Request by Nicole Nice to vacate 60-foot-wide ingress easement for the future roadway. The 60-foot-wide easement is located on lot number two, block of, block A of Morgan Heights subdivision.
Block five, excuse me. It's block five, if you're reading that.
It's a block A, block five? Okay. I wasn't reading up here.
Oh.
I should have been then.
Okay.
It says A on my paper. So, block five, lot five, block A of Morgan Heights subdivision. The address of the property is 1403 North Mayfield Road. Any questions or comments on this?
Just wanted to make sure it was...
Yeah. Somehow I got that wrong, but yeah.
Planning and zoning? Excuse me?
Yeah, planning and zoning, yeah, for planning.
Want to make a comment or?
Yeah. Any comments? Don?
Mark Von Achen, county planner. I wasn't sure if the commission had any comments or questions for me, but I'm here to answer them, or I can give a brief overview of this proposal if you'd like.
I'd say a brief overview. There's question I might have.
Okay. So this is a request to vacate a 60-foot-wide road easement. This subdivision, Morgan Heights, was recorded in 1984. This public road that was platted within that subdivision was never built. There are large trees that are blocking the access to this easement on the west side. If you look at the aerial photo on the screen, you'll see those trees here. There's also a fence that actually runs down the east side of that, that larger tract that also blocks access to that. No one has ever inquired about constructing this road, ever. Most importantly, I think, is to keep in mind is that every property owner, if this easement is vacated, still has public access to their property. Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on this. They reviewed all the facts of the case, and at the end of that public hearing, they voted six to nothing to recommend approval of vacating this road easement. Nobody at that public hearing spoke in favor or against this vacation. County commissioners have three items that you must find in order to order the, the road easement vacated. You got to find that proper notice was provided to the public. The public will suffer no loss or inconvenience by the vacation, and that no private rights will be injured or endangered. In your packet, you'll see that we sent notices to a lot of utility companies, and nobody responded that they had a concern with that, so. With that brief overview, if I stand for any other further questions?
The Nice's own the entire Manesment property?
Yes, the easement is entirely owned by, by the Nice's. Yes, it's entirely on their, their property. They own 100% of that. If you look at the, the other subdivision plan stuff, it'll show that that entire 60-foot easement is on their property, and it, it does restrict because you should not be putting buildings in a future road easement or any type of easement for that matter.
I understand that. I just wanted to get an idea on the ownership, because sometimes there's two buddy.
Sometimes there is. 50% of the easement will be on another property, in which case then both owners would have to agree to the vacation in order for it to go forward.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, Don. Any further questions?
I would move to commission approve the planning case number 2023-09, as presented by staff, that shows it met the three requirements for vacation of this right of way.
I will second it.
Any further comment? Well, if not, we'll call.
Commissioner Hirsch?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
Yes.
Commissioner Weitzel?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. Item 8B, somebody is absent with an illness, so we'll skip that. She'll probably, or they'll present that at another time, so. At this time, item 8C, information and technology, we'll have an annual report from Mike.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Matthews, Information Technology Director. I appreciate the opportunity to share with you this morning. I'll just kind of quickly go through the document that I provided. Through our help desk, over the last year, we took in 2,050 tickets for service, and that's, that's a lot for, for what we do. That doesn't count people that call or stop by or catch us in the hall or, or all of those things, so we have been able to service those, and we, we've started doing a customer survey. So right now, we are at a rating of 4.8 over 5. So we feel real good about our response time, the, the service that we're providing to all of our users, and, you know, we, we also do some other things for that particular position. They do some of our security work. If we get a report of a malicious email or something of that nature, he will work on that, try to help keep that cleaned up and that sort of thing, so we, we feel real good about where we're at there. We also offer GIS services. That can be anything from providing a set of parcel layers to somebody to, we maintain all of the road center lines, all of the addresses through that, and that is imperative to public safety, because our, the way that our public safety software works at all starts with the location. So if those aren't correct, everything down the line is, can be a problem and has to be worked on, so he is constantly maintaining that layer and making sure that it is moved to the public safety softwares and, and that sort of thing, and he does a really good job of that. You know, we take on many different projects through that, some things for the appraisers, some things for, for planning, zoning, Public Works, just health department. Environmental health, we do a large project for them through GIS every, all the time. One of the new things this year is data analysis. We integrated the data analyst role that the health department had into our department, and that allows us to offer those services to all the departments of the county. He can run reports, analyze that data, give the, the department a, a report of what the data is telling him. We've done quite a bit with 911 on that, on response times. We do a lot for the health department on, on their accreditations, that sort of thing. We've worked a little bit with Randy's department. So as a newer role for us, we're still finding our way on that a little bit, but so far, we've been able to expand the use of that, that service, and so we're excited about where that will go in the future. Document management, one of the big pushes that we've had the last couple of years is to reduce the amount of paper that we use, and this disposition, I believe, has done a really, really good job of that. Over the last year, we converted different software from what we were using to something called Square9, so he had a big project just doing that conversion, but through that, he also expanded the use to, to several different departments. We've taken most of the documents that were on the fifth floor for the clerk, the treasurer, those departments, and digitized all of those so they could be gone through and, and gotten rid of. He's been able to create processes that make departments paperless. Our onboarding process through HR is now paperless. I think most all things that HR is doing now is pretty much paperless, whether it's using Square9 or, or PandaDoc, our, our e-signature software that, that you guys are familiar with, with vouchers. I, I can't remember the exact number of documents that we now have digitized, but it's somewhere north of 4 million. So we have a lot of data that is electronically available to, to the departments to use. He has spent the last year with the register of deeds, scanning books and, and a lot of their old records so that we can get those archived and, and available electronically. So that, we're really proud of what's going on there. We think we're, there's a lot of good work there. Database administration, there's a lot we could talk about there, but what we're doing in an effort to reduce some of our expenses to Microsoft is converting a lot of access databases to different applications that we are writing in-house. So that kind of ties the database administration and the web administration together because they, we're using them both to, to do that. So we have replaced applications, I believe, in Community Corrections, Health Department, Department of Aging. So that takes time to write those applications, test them, make sure they're working, but he, he is continuously working on that. And another thing that we have done in that process is we, we are currently writing, building kiosks that are customer-friendly, that they can sell, serve themselves, like, like at Community Corrections, we're developing one now, the... Corrections, we're developing one now that a person can come in, pick the officer that they're there to see, click it, it'll send them an email, they can come, come get them. If they're there for some other service, it'll pick the right person to come to the door, let them in and help them service. In the Department of Aging, we have put in a kiosk that they can just simply touch and it will send a message to all of the Department of Aging people and say, there's somebody here that needs service and they'll come and help them. So it helps when there's nobody available to help at a window or whatever. So, you know, we've also put in a kiosk at the Annex that kind of directs people where they, what office they need to go to so that they can be a little more self-sufficient. So those are some bigger projects that we're doing through that. Our public safety, she is just busy all the time. You know, we support all the SO vehicles, all of the software for HPD, NSO, 911. We, this year, we were a pilot project for a major upgrade. So that allowed us to have a lot of say in how that upgrade went and how it was applied. Turned out to be a really, really good thing for us. Gave us some options that we didn't have earlier than we might have gotten them and we were scheduled to do that again, I believe, this fall. So we work with the city, we work city police, we work with the SO, JL, 911 records through that, all of that, setting up mobile data terminals. I mean, it's just a constant, everyday thing. Some of the things that are more advanced things that we've had to do this year is we've had to expand our security camera storage. We're just running out of space. That stuff grows so incredibly quickly and so we've had to be real creative in expanding our space and try to not spend any money in the process of doing that. So we're working real hard on that and we've been able to do that. We are also, since we have vacated the basement, we had an area where there was a piece of equipment with just thousands of cables coming in that needed to be moved across the hall. So we've been in the process of identifying all of that, moving that. We're, I'd say we're, what, 80% done or so now? We'll probably finish in the next couple of weeks and then we'll be completely vacated out of the basement. We're also trying real hard to find ways, again, to reduce Microsoft Office licensing. So we're working with each department, trying to find who could go to a lesser license and who can't. Our goal is to save $20,000. At this point, I can't tell you whether we're going to make that or not because we just have to determine who can actually do it and who can't. And right now, we don't have all of that determined. We have it determined for a number of departments, but not all of them. We, you know, we're just working with all of the different departments in an effort to save money because we just feel that is, we went out on a faith and offered some reductions to Randy in our budget, so now we've got to find a way to make those happen. And so that's, that's kind of what Tim and I have been working on the most, is finding what we can and can't get rid of. A couple of things that I wanted to bring up that aren't on here. We recently received our .gov domain from the government, so we will be exploring changing email addresses from Reno.gov.org to RenoCountyKS.gov. There's some security reasons to do that, mostly in the Sheriff's Office because of the criminal justice information that we have to protect. And there are some things that they can't email unless it's behind a .gov domain. So if we're going to change them, we're going to consider changing everybody to that domain. But that will not be like, okay, you got to change today. We'll do it over a year's time or so. But that is one of the bigger things that we're probably getting ready to take on. We'll be discussing that with department heads next week, so we think that's probably the right way to go. And that kind of ties into the other thing is we are considering changing our vendor for our website and that's really a financial decision and this would be a good time to do it if we're going to change our domain. So you'll be hearing more about that in the near future, I think. Randy and I talked about it and met yesterday and we think that it may be the right way to go, but we still have some research to do there. That's a real quick overview. I'm sure willing to address any concerns or any questions that you have on what's going on with us. I know the staff is really appreciative of the move and the furniture for upstairs, so we want to thank you for that. It seems like that's working out really well for us, so we're really grateful for that.
Questions?
I don't have any questions. I think we may somehow alert John Q.
Keep me on the street now. I think somehow we need to alert John Q. Public on all the things that the IT does and the importance of what IT does here in the county. And I know I've appreciated every time I needed something, that you've been available and try to find a time that works for all of us and I appreciate that very much.
Yeah, a lot of what you do also works on the outside, things that they access as well. I'm just curious, though, on the fire. We've had some fire district meetings. I know some others are going to talk probably about that, but do you support that software too that they?
We do.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's all integrated into the law enforcement, public safety software. So, yeah, it's all one big, big package with different modules and so.
Yeah, I learned a little bit more about that at the district meeting the other night. Thought it was interesting.
I did too.
How that was used and so, yeah. And I would butcher it if I said anything, so it'd take somebody, so some real intelligence to talk about it, but I thought it was pretty fascinating.
I did too. The guys were real, excepted last night, that they would get information right when they need it, when they're walking in the door and preparing to leave.
Right.
Rather than receive it later on, you know, when it went through previous channels. I mean, I'm no techie, but it's got its spot and that'll be one of them. It'll speed up service and they'll arrive with the right equipment.
Well, the response plans are, it's a big job to, for everybody to maintain those response plans so the right piece of equipment gets to the, to the right place. So, and, you know, they all, all members of that take a part in it, whether it's a fire, police, whoever it is, you know, they're all worked together to build those response plans. We just, we just make it work. So we don't know what to send, but, yeah, it's an amazing piece of software.
It is. Yeah. And they are, like I said, they seem to be very appreciative of it. They could see the good coming from it.
So, thank you. Any other comments? Questions? All right. Thank you. If not, thanks, Mike. Appreciate that. We'll move to item 9A, monthly reports. Randy?
Okay. In the packet are the monthly reports from APD, Public Transit, Appraiser, Automotive, County Clerk, Community Corrections, Communications, DEA, and Emergency Management. Reading through those. Are there any questions on all of the reports?
No? No questions?
I don't think so. I didn't run across anything that.
Well, then we can move to 9B.
9B is the financial report. Right now, for revenues, things are really good. In the general fund, we have received more than what we budgeted, so we will, that'll help us when we do the 2025 budget in a few months. That'll help whatever increases that we see on expenditures, having that extra cash will help a little bit. Wanted to see if there are any questions specifically. You can see, like County Commission as an example, the budget, 75%. That's right on track to basically spend everything. He won't go over, but that's, that's probably the department that is the most tightly budgeted of actual cost versus having a little bit of cushion. So that one probably will hit right at 100%. Others, maybe around 78 and 65. They're kind of all over the board, but usually in the, somewhere in the 70s is where they need to be right now. If they get into the 80s, we're going to have some issues probably with their budget by the end of the year. General fund, go to the cash balance. For example, we've received 21 million in revenues, spent 13.9 so far. Of course, that's, there are some large expenditures that will still hit end of the year on a construction cost and transfers that have not been made to some departments and to reserve funds that were budgeted for that purpose. So we will get closer, a lot, the expenses will get a lot closer to the revenues by the end of the year. Any questions on specific funds or departments?
I didn't see anything as I was looking through this, but I wanted to know if there was anything that you thought we should notice or be paying attention to?
No, there's really not. When I looked through it, there was nothing that caught my eye and when I looked through budget reports, there's nothing really out of the ordinary. Some funds and departments are doing better than others, but we're going to be fine. I'm not concerned about any expenses.
9C?
9C? This was from Public Works Director Don Britton about a revocation of the environmental health trip charge policy that's been in place since 2016. One of those administrative regulations that got added into the sanitary code years ago and I believe when you guys talked about changes, you wanted any administrative changes to, for you to be notified. So that's why it's just in my report. It's administrative decision by Don to do this. He's here. If you have any questions about that specific trip charge policy, that's why it's in the agenda. And I think for the, sorry.
No, you're all right.
The trip charge, they used to, I guess, charge a fee for, is it the third trip out there to a site?
Yeah, Don, you might.
He could probably explain it better.
Don Britton, Director of Public Works. Yeah, the trip charge, whenever there was a permit, then they was allowed to go out and do two inspections as part of the permit fee. Any inspection after that was a $50 charge upfront before the inspection was done. So because of that trip charge, in the last five years, there's several hundreds of projects that haven't been finalized or finally inspected. And so, so it's a burden to staff, it's a burden to the public, it's a burden to the contractors and it needed to go away and that's why I revoked it. I think that we need to go out and we need to do as many inspections as it takes to close the project and they get it done correctly and there shouldn't be a trip charge. And so now we have all these hundreds of them, but Dorsey and I and her staff will go through them and there's many minor ones or maybe it just needed to take one final inspection because, you know, and the project was fine, but now it was on the third one that's going to cost $50 and people weren't going to pay it and didn't pay it, so there was no inspection. We're going to close those out. If there's major ones, like there's, you know, wastewater surfacing or, you know, a lagoon system not with a fence around it, we're going to address those. But all the others, we're going to start over from now and not have this trip charge.
Good. Thank you, Don. I think that's a good move.
The other thing, I was just going to let you know that the, for Clerk.gov, our digital budget book, I'm working with Sandra, I've been working with Sean and Leslie, make sure everything's ready, that the 2024 digital budget book should be on our website by the end of this week. So that'll get any citizens or anyone wanting to view the county's budget for 2024 and I believe also 2023's will be there. So like get a better understanding of where their money's going and what we're spending, what costs are.
Good.
Yeah. Any update on getting the legal notices on the website?
We're working on that. I think there's, just being so busy, yeah, we, we're making sure that we're getting things out there when we can, but to create a specific page.
But creating a specific page for that is what IT and Sandra have been working on. I think we're close.
That it?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Randy. Appreciate it. We'll move to 10, County Commissioner reports.
Yeah, I guess you're looking at me.
Yeah, we'll come in. So I'll let you go first, Don.
Okay. Couple of things that have come up and I should have caught it earlier with Mr. Matthews. I noticed in stuff I've been receiving that over our, I got a, what I'll call an ad for DraftKings. I mean, is that proper to be on our county or somebody sneaking some advertisement in here? Or do we have a policy? Just what's going on there? Because I, I know you got to leave it open to the public so that they can come any time they want, but this appeared to be a commercial.
Yeah, that's not county-supported and Mike or Tim, if you want to.
Wait, that's why I want it just to be an outlook thing where they got that, maybe?
Well, that could be a couple of things. It could be coming from our spam testing. We run a spam testing campaign constantly. The other thing is that these spammers have gotten really, really sophisticated and so they can dodge our spam filters. And what they do is they, any email addresses that are on our public website, they can go out and scrape those and use them. So even though we have devices in place to try to keep that from happening, we're probably never going to stop all of them. But we also do run a campaign constantly to remind our users not to click on stuff like that. And it could have come from that as well because those are very well-hidden emails because we want them to be that way. So that if somebody clicks on it, it's going to tell them that they failed the test and we're going to know that. So that we can, it helps us develop our training to all of our users. So I'm almost betting that that's what that was.
Well, I just hadn't seen anything like that. I know I haven't been at this a long time. But it just looked strange to me and I thought it didn't belong there. So I was going to bring it up.
Yeah.
So, I mean, and I can see, like you said, how it could possibly get there by other means if it wasn't a test of yours. But, but I, you know, it's just something that stuck out that I wanted to mention.
Just so you know, we probably block between 6,000 and 8,000 of those a day that don't get to the end users. But there are always those that are written well enough that the spam filters don't catch them. So. Just so you know, we probably block between six and eight thousand of those a day that don't get to the end users. But there are always those that are written well enough that the spam filters don't catch them. So that, those are the ones that usually cause us the hard burden.
The bigger question is, did you win anything with that free two hundred dollars?
Thousand dollars. Yeah, no, I didn't click on.
No, I'm kidding.
As, as foolish as I may seem, I did not click on. But, uh, I, I, cause I just didn't feel it belonged there and I was gonna ask for it, I did. The other thing, had a constituent this morning that's concerned and was wondering if there can, can be anything done about access to the river, Arkansas River. And it's, it's not the first time it's come up to me. This one happens to be on Yoda Road. They access the river, which is public property or through county property. And then they sneak on back and they access private property. Same thing happens on Haven Road, I've heard that. We've got some in Cedric County and it happens regularly. And they are doing damage to dykes and everything else by constantly riding their equipment over. I've, I've got a spot in a dyke on mine that's bored this deep. I finally just set a big old tree in it that they're not gonna move. Now, those are government entities that own most of those dykes. So how do we prevent access off of our property onto public property?
Don Britton, again, yeah, this has been going on forever. We put in our right of way, they're not allowed to access the river from our right of way. They're allowed to be on the river, just not access to our right of way. We put up boulders, we put up fences, we've done everything. And then usually they'll tear down the fences or go around it all and get on private property. Now it's not our issue anymore, it's the private citizen which has no control over it because these people are out of control. So I don't know what the answer to that is. They know that they're not allowed to use our public right of way because you, you're not allowed to use it. So I don't know what the answer to that is, Don.
And, and everybody you talk to points, stands in a circle and points the finger to the next guy.
Exactly.
And, and, uh, the only thing is, in our case over there, that's a private dyke. That is not a government dyke. The families that originally owned that land built the dykes themselves. So the dyke is ours too.
So once, you know, once they enter your private property, that's, that's your issue to deal with. Dealing with getting on the county right of way, yeah, if you wanna have a sheriff's officer sitting there all the time, which we can't, so it's just, there's no answer. Cause like I say, we build a fence, they'll go around it, we put up boulders.
I know.
You know, we have to have access too. We have to take care of that right of way.
Yeah, I, I know. In our case, we had a fence there, it doesn't make any difference. And the longer the fence is, the longer they drive on yours.
That's true. That is happening.
So I was asked to bring it up and I did. Thank you.
Anything else? Ron?
Same things happened up at Nickerson. I've been called out there on the same thing at Nickerson and, and, uh, actually a couple of things I wanted to just bring up, uh, were pretty positive. And, and, uh, one of those was in the, uh, Minnesota Valley News, talking about Pretty Prairie's daycare center. And it's a prime example, in my opinion, of community awareness, community partnership, community response from the people that live there to make things happen and to find out how to get things happen. And so I just think that's, that's a, a pretty good picture that one could use in any other community. The other item is coming up tomorrow night, uh, and that's the, uh, Open Door Health Services, uh, meeting, uh, fundraising meeting at, uh, the Metal Arc Building at the state fairgrounds. And, uh, if you have any questions about and wanna consider any of that, go to their website and there's a telephone number to call, so. That's it.
Okay, Don?
So, uh, Mr. Casey made some serious allegations about corruption during his public comment. And, um, I, I would, uh, you know, if you're, if you're, uh, suggesting that members of this board were bought off, um, I, I would really like to see some evidence for that. Uh, me personally and on the county commission, I didn't get any campaign donations from anybody. Um, that's because I was appointed here. Um, I ran for the state house of representatives and I did get donations from several people, including Dr. Stefan. But, um, other than him being a public citizen and being able to talk to me the same way anybody else does, he doesn't control me at all. And so I don't know if you're referring to me or not, but, um, those are some serious allegations and they really should have some backup, um, and some proof if you're gonna say that there's corruption at that level that, and so I just wanted to address that publicly. Other than that, I don't have any other public comments.
Do I get to respond to that?
Do I get to respond?
I was gonna say, I, I will back that up a little bit before I, I, I might allow you to respond to that, but I'll back that up a little bit too. I had two state representatives that contributed to me with no strings attached. Everyone that contributed to my campaign knew that there's no strings attached. I'm an independent thinker and I'll do what I want according to the conscience of the people of Reno County. And I too felt that that was, you know, that was somewhat unfounded. When you're first running, you're looking for funds, however you can get them. And, and I will be honest, I denied some of the funds because there were some of those situations and I wasn't about to take the money and have it look like public perception that I was, uh, I was at. And in fact, there was articles written about me in the paper, I'll say publicly, and put online about that very fact, and I refuted that multiple times, uh, in the public sector. So I know that, that, you know, I'll just put that part of it to bed. What are you looking for time there to say something?
A minute. Go ahead.
Can I speak?
It's completely up to you as to whether you let me.
Well, if it's information that you wanna throw out, I'm okay with that. If it's, I'm not gonna have a badgering contest up here for sure, but I'd like to hear from Don Britton too. I mean, uh, Don Bogner.
Too many Dons, too many Rands, there is too many. But the bottom line is, we turned in our financial reports to the state. And you can look, I received no funds from Dr. Stefan. And I felt you were hitting below the belt. Either have your facts right or don't, don't open your mouth. Like John says, this is serious.
Do I get to respond?
Go ahead.
You can have a minute. I'd like to hear what you got to say.
Again, Casey Schwartz. What I exactly said, and I did not say there was corruption. What I exactly said, and I do have all the forms, I monitor all the candidates and what they take in. Okay, it said, exactly. In the interview meeting, the monetary relationship between doctors and drug companies were brought up. It was brought up in that meeting. In two thousand twenty-two, the Stephens invested thousands in campaign contributions to current members of this commission. I did not say whether it was for a commission race or whether it was for a state level race. I said thousands in campaign contributions. I said nothing about corruption. I said it is evident that Mark expects a return on his investment. That is what I said, those were my words. So it is up to you to make whatever decision that you want.
So you don't think a, uh, public official accepting campaign contributions in return for votes or favors or, um, things down the line would be corruption? I would find that very corrupt personally.
I didn't say that. I didn't say that at all. I said specifically, he made those contributions.
And expects a payback.
And I said it's evident that he expects a return on his investment. I did not say that you were going to provide that return.
But that was implied.
That's up to you.
That was very purposely implied.
That is up to you.
And so you were out of order with that comment.
It's, it was an inference like John said. And like I said, I didn't get any money there. I didn't get any.
And I'm well aware of that.
Yeah.
Well, well, contributions are public knowledge.
Yes, they are.
Advertising dollars are public knowledge, all that stuff's completely transparent, anyone can have it, so.
I, I agree. And that's why I know what dollars went where.
Right.
And I did not say there was corruption. Not once did I say there was corruption. I'm, I'm gonna be honest, I think of you commissioners in a positive light. I have seen many good things happen in this commission this year. And quite honestly, I feel great about most of it. I have to comment on what is happening to Dr. Polly. I'll be honest with you, it was not easy to watch that meeting the other night. Not easy at all. I was amazed. I did not say there was corruption.
Well, I appreciate your comments and that was on your public comments. I appreciate you speaking earlier, Casey, on that as well. So I thought for the public record, we'd ought to hear what had to be said by the commissioners as well. Um, I don't expect a, a pay for play situation with anybody that contributes to me. And there's just gonna be people along the way that, that wanna support your ideologies and who you are regardless. And I don't believe they do that for an, an intended favor, so. And that's how I look at the things as well. I'm sure, and you know, Ron, you've been around a long time, I'm sure you, you understand that more than all of us do, having ran for office.
Certainly do, and, uh, I've never received any specific funds from anyone that was mentioned here today. I have, uh, had certain people expect certain votes of me. And when I didn't vote that way, I was pretty well chastised. And, uh, that's, that's what we signed up to do, is to, is to represent not only our district, but what's in the best interest of the populace of Reno County.
That's right.
And we each have slightly different views on different items at times. We can make our case and, uh, that's all we can do. And if I fail to convince John and John fails to commit me, if he commits me, then, then we have different views and just won't be able to change. Even though we might wanna look at it, we should look at it each individually. But, uh, that, uh, I, I thought the other night was about ninety-nine percent positive. At the end, there was that one percent that attacked and I was not impressed with that attack. And that's the way I took it, other people may not have taken it that same way. But nonetheless, I appreciate, um, Randy, Commissioner, you letting people talk.
Yeah.
That's what we're here for.
That is exactly what we're here to serve people.
Thank you.
May I say one last thing?
Yeah, briefly.
I apologize if it was taken that way. I really didn't mean it to be. I'm just saying that Mr. Stefan has expectations and he's given lots of money to candidates. I apologize. I think that you guys are doing a fantastic job overall. I've seen a lot of good stuff happen.
I appreciate that, thank you, Casey. John, did you have anything else?
No, sir.
Okay.
I got one more comment.
Yeah, sure.
What, I think at the local level, there's a lot of difference between at the state level. The lobbyists at the state level really expect a lot. And they, there's been plenty of, plenty of, uh, votes gone on at the state level. Finally, that were absolutely, completely controlled by the lobbyists at the state level. And, uh, that I hope never occurs at the local level.
Amen.
Thank you, that's all.
I agree. Well, Don, you got one last thing?
One last thing, and I will say this. The man over there gets my attention. If I think something comes along that's questionable, I slip into his office and ask him. That's what he's paid for, to help keep us out of trouble. And, uh, he earns his dollars Sundays when I come in there. So, uh, we are aware that things happen. And, and, uh, if we feel there's something questionable, I sure bring it up to counsel and, and he counsels me. And, uh, I just, there are avenues and there are people in places. When you don't know for sure, you ask. That's their job.
Yeah. Thank you, Don.
And we utilize them.
Well, I have a couple of things, one of them you stole. I'm going tomorrow night to the open, open door as well, that banquet. So I'd encourage you to, uh, like, like Commissioner Hurst said, get involved with that if you haven't. They do some great work and, and a great bunch of people. And not to mention, if you know who Nicole C. Nordman is, she'll be there tomorrow night as well, so. But anyway, I, uh, I'd attended the public hearings last week that we had. I appreciate those, it came out for those and, uh, and certainly one of them was the health forum. And then out there in Habit, we did that one as well. Not quite the showing out there, but, uh, it was good to have those. Uh, I had Fire District meeting Monday night, we're working through those. I know Commissioner, uh, Freezin had one last week, Don, you had one this week as well. And so very enlightening, that's why I brought up that software and what it would do. In light of the fact we're trying to make one district out of that, uh, there were some very, very good conversations invoked at that meeting. Uh, the very things that I had hoped would happen, that they'd communicate with the volunteers, went on that night. There was a great reciprocation of conversations and, and a lot of great information. And, and I, and I could see the peace, uh, on the face and, and the countenance of the people that were, that do the actual work out there, let's just put it that way. Uh, they're bought in and, uh, but you know, it's a work in progress. I know it's gonna be at least probably another year, the way Adam and them talked. We gotta get it on another budget next year for the year following. And so it may be twenty-five before we do that anyway. There's, there's plenty ample time to get things ironed out. But I, I was really impressed by the personnel that showed up and, and how the meeting was conducted. And I just wanted to put kudos out there to all them that came there. And so I had attended the Highlands, uh, a meeting prior to that, just, uh, Benzit was out there. Carol Moore had asked me to come out to that, so I sat in on their city meeting for just a little bit before I went down to the Fire District. But, uh, but that was very good. And so I don't know that I have anything else other than that. And if there's nothing else, we could move to adjourn this meeting then. All right, let's do it. Thank you.